Yeah, because if you go through the link, you don't get your back now.
Well, here we are, two of us anyway.
Yeah, I don't know why they all get on before Ed. A lot easier, just.
It's true.
Sorry, I didn't respond to you earlier. I just found it today when I was looking for the meeting. I went, I didn't tell Tony I'm gonna be there.
No, no problem. I heard, I didn't hear from Meneer yet anyway, but as long as I, more people I hear from, the easier.
Yeah.
How are you feeling?
Okay, finally.
Good.
Well, I was away last meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Before that, yeah. Yeah, I was in the emergency room and I'm like, I'm supposed to be in a meeting.
Yeah, I remember that one.
It was like, oh, well, you, you never know when you get to how long that's gonna take.
I know.
So how's your back?
It's coming. It's probably ninety percent now.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I do a lot of walking. I, I'm in the gym. I have a, I still have a little bit of weakness in my hip flexors that allow me to lift my legs, but that's a, I think a result of the surgery. It's getting stronger, so I'm, I'm pretty close.
Oh, good.
Not dealing with really, a little bit of discomfort, but not really much pain.
Yeah, not like before.
No, no, not before. Yes, coming.
All right, where's everybody? Come on.
I know.
My husband sets an alarm that goes off at quarter to seven.
Okay.
So we don't, because I forgot one meeting I actually forgot until the meeting was almost over. So now we set it when I know the meeting is. Because otherwise you get busy, you know, it's after dinner, you turn on the news and suddenly it's like.
Yeah, I do the same thing. I've got the news on. I, I click on, see what time it is a couple of times. Oh, my goodness, it's like six fifty-three or something. I need to.
He has the, he has, there's an alarm that rings at seven, six forty-five, it starts ringing.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Because at least that gives me plenty of time to get on. Maybe it's just gonna be the two of us.
I, I don't know, could be.
So I missed the discussion. What's going on with the guy in the, that wants to build the well? Are we sympathetic to him or are we not?
I think increasingly sympathetic.
See, I'm not.
We want to, we want to find a way to.
Help him out.
Help him out.
But it's just, we're not really supposed to be giving well permits, you know, well.
No, we're, we're not, but this one has, it's got, we, we talked about it last meeting. There's, there's so many things going on. Here comes, like, I need to admit Ed. I don't know why I need to admit, admit Ed, but I just admitted him, I think.
Because it says you are the co-host with.
I, yeah, I am the co-host, but he's also the host, so he should be able to admit himself. We'll see what happens.
Somebody has to let him be the host. Now we're in trouble because Ed don't remember to let anybody in.
I know, but it'll show up on my screen unless I get into the minutes. Ah, there he is.
There he is. Hi, Ed.
Whoa, how you doing, guys?
We're here, we're here, yeah.
We getting, wait a minute. Where's my?
Ed, you got a really funny glare on your face.
Well, it's because of my screen.
Oh, it makes you look like.
My screen is white. It'll, when it turns black, it'll go away.
Okay.
But.
I knew it wasn't sunshine coming in there because.
No, not, not today. Let's see, how much? Uh, we got two point oh one inches of rain so far in the last twenty-four hours. And that's not the end of it. So tonight, we're probably gonna get another two to three inches, so that's gonna be a washout.
Well, I wasn't planning on going anywhere anyway, so.
Yeah, well, I hope we have electricity by the end of this.
Yeah, that's all I hope for too.
The ground is very soft. I'm gonna see what the radar says here. Come up. Oops. No, we're not done yet. Another band coming in, few minutes.
Oh, really?
The rain is supposed to die down, the wind is supposed to pick up, so it's a trade-off.
Yeah.
We had a lot of thunder and lightning last night. Loud.
Yeah, I heard, I heard some. I was surprised.
Yeah.
It woke me up. I couldn't figure out for a second what it was.
Yeah, because it's, it was such a weird sound in October.
I know.
Already got chainsaw action.
Yeah.
You got chainsaw action?
Yeah, I got a tree down across my drive.
So you can't go anywhere till you get rid of it?
Uh, well, actually, I had to walk around it to get home.
Well, as long as it didn't hit a power line, you're okay.
Yeah, I missed the power line.
Good.
Yeah.
If it was all underground, we wouldn't ever have to worry about it.
Yeah, but you know, when they gotta fix it underground, it's not that easy to find it.
No, but it certainly, why would you want to find it? It's, you, if it's not giving you any trouble.
But it does. Watch when the, watch when the light goes out, a whole light goes out on the side of the highway. See how long that takes before that gets fixed? Because they can't figure out where the wires messed up.
Yeah, but I think we'd solve a lot of problems.
Hi, Kerry.
That's Kerry.
Hey, welcome back, Sharon.
Thanks.
So who invited him?
You back in Florida?
No, no, I'm still here.
I almost took a new picture from the cruise ship balcony. I had a nice sun. I said, no, I liked the one I got already.
Thanks, Ed.
Well, you guys need to, you need to see what we're doing.
I just have it on my other screen.
Uh, raise in. Who we missing? I don't see Stan.
I know Stan is coming. I haven't heard from Meneer.
Yeah. I don't know if Meneer, I haven't seen him in a long time.
He was at the last meeting. There's Jeremy. I just, I'll admit Jerry.
There's Jeremy.
Yep.
Hello.
Oh. You got another, uh, are you ready, Tony? We're, we got another minute.
Yeah, uh, yeah, give me another minute. I'm gonna, I've gotta click out of this, so you'll be the one that admits people. It should show up on your participant screen. You're still waiting for Stan.
Yeah, it should come up.
Yep.
I hope.
I know Stan's coming, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, this should give a notice. I would think.
You have to check it though to catch the notice.
Well, yeah, if you, if you're doing a display, if you're showing a share, it sometimes doesn't come up.
Yeah, I know Stan is coming. He said he'll be here, so we'll probably give him a minute or so.
Yeah.
It's only six fifty-nine.
Oh, yeah.
Making all that noise in my background. You. I know, but, you know, it goes across my video here. I just muted myself.
What was that?
No.
Sharon, you just unmuted yourself. Be careful what you say.
Just told my husband he could go get some vinegar, anything.
All right, where's Stan?
I know, as soon as I, soon as I go into the minutes and social, uh, show Stan and Meneer not here, they'll come. Then I'll have to go fix them, but I'm, I'm gonna go into the minutes anyway.
Yeah, you, because once you go there, it's tough to get back, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna start tracking the, the attendance. If someone shows up, just tell me.
Yep. All right, so we're ready to begin. It's seven o'clock, or seven oh one, actually. So I'll call the town of Ledge, Connecticut Water Pollution Control Authority, regular meeting to order.
Stan is here, or Stan just showed up.
Yeah, he's in.
So give me, give me thirty seconds to do the attendance thing, and I'll assume Meneer's not going to come, or if he comes, he comes late. So I'll tell you in a second when I'm ready to go.
Yeah, the members.
Give me a second here. Oh, come on. I'll call onto this to me.
Who are you gonna make a voting member?
Jim.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get to this though.
Let's see, let's see, residents or property owners, so we'll.
Yeah, you can go ahead and move on and I'll, I'll play with roll call.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna bring up the minutes. So are there any corrections, additions, or omissions?
There's one correction.
And, and Terry had a couple as well, minor corrections.
Okay, Terry, did you give yours to Tony?
Yeah, I sent them by email.
Yeah, there's a, they're just spelling ones. There's a, I'm sorry, there, there's a spelling one. There's a, an, uh, an F that should be a B, and omission should be singular.
Okay.
These are just editorial corrections. They're not regular corrections.
Okay, so they're just mainly grammatical spelling?
That's all there are, so we don't need to, as amended, we just need to.
Okay, good. So I'll entertain a vote then, all those, with those amendments, but all those, uh, all those that are, approve the minutes of September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention.
But Ed, you didn't do a first, you didn't do a motion or a second. Tony needs a motion.
All right, so, uh, all, so I make, I make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Well, when and how, Sharon, Ed makes the motion and you second.
Okay.
I just do that automatically.
All right, so it's, it's, uh, it's there approved, yes. Okay, now we have the operations report with Ray. Uh, the one thing, uh, that, uh, we'll, we'll talk about this in the old business, but Ray did, Ray and I did go out to, um, properties one seventy and one fifty. Uh, these are the individuals that are petitioning for a well. We'll discuss that later, as to what, what the resolution of that is. Um, but is, does anybody else have any other comments about the operation report? I don't, I'm on my, if not, we'll move on. Agent report, um, well, by the way, Bill, I, everyone knows Bill's not here because he's in a hunting expedition. Um, I don't see, we've collected a hundred thirty-five thousand for September. I don't really see anything of note. It's like we're collecting our funds. Any, any comments? Hearing none, we'll go to the water budget. Um, I have no comments. It seems like everything is basically normal. Nothing unusual, nothing came out. Um, same thing with sewer. Um, even the electrical seems to be behaving, I don't know why. Uh, and, and other expenses seem to be normal. And then we'll go to the, uh, operation report for the, um, now we will be talking about, there, there is an impact with, with Don going to, uh, from LaFleur Electric going to Florida. That has been our most reliable subcontractor electrician. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking for, um, we're gonna be looking for another, hopefully, the same kind of quality service that we've gotten in the past. Uh, I will also be talking about the meeting we had with Paul Russell, Smith and Lovelace, in the old business. Also, Lakeside has had a major problem with a four-inch valve, um, that we're gonna re, uh, we're gonna replace. So we've had to, we've had to do some cleanup there. That valve failed, and when it did, it started pumping, spraying sewage everywhere. Anything else? Nope.
Don Schellhammer recommended somebody. Is he of the same company? And Andy Sagali, is he from LaFleur?
Um, no, Andy, uh, Andy Sagali is a, he's, he's not an electrician. He is a control person. We know those trades are kind of different. Sometimes electricians can do control, sometimes control people can do like, you know, the heavy electrical, but, but these are two separate, um, skill sets, and Andy's a great resource for the control, the control panel and doing the programming on the, on the Alan Bradley PLCs. But Don was also a good guy with instrumentation and, and electrical, so we're gonna miss him. But he's not, no, he's not with the same company. He, he, I believe he went on his own or, or is working for another company in Florida. So that's the impact there. Okay, I don't have a status yet. I think the contracts have been signed by the, so in old business, the Gallup demo, uh, the contracts have been signed. I don't know, and, and, um, Grotten Utilities is managing this, um, and they have the contracts in place. I don't know the start date for that. Um, number two, I'm gonna share, let me see if I can get to it, some pictures. I know you guys have seen these pictures, but let me go and share these pictures. Hold on a second. Here we go. So, me, uh, this is the top of the tank. You can, it's kind of, it's updating. You can see that's, that's peeling. Another picture. Uh, I'm not really sure what this, but you can see the, the, that, um, the tank needs painting. This, this is the bad news. I guess this is the guy that's up there taking the pictures.
Yeah.
We're back to this one, but we're gonna be faced with having to paint the tank, so.
Ed, the, the, the black stuff on the top is just dirt from the sky. So we wipe, you wipe that clean. You down, you're down to get into the red, the, well, it's not, it's a primer, different color, so it's going through that. And so some peeling, most of it's like the side of the tank, it's chalky. So when he was up there, he wiped that down and everything comes up, but yeah, you're in the, usually paint coating his last twenty years, and you're in the, what, the sixth, fifteenth to sixteenth year. Plus, the roof is the first one that takes the beating because it's the, obviously, the highest one and.
Yeah, what concerns me is the well, so I'm kind of got a hand on there. This, this is what can, can corrode and cause some real issues. So, yeah, when I look at that, that well seam and I see corrosion on it, that's not good. You know, I know it takes a while for a well to fail, but that, you know, the plate itself has to be painted, but that, that's the other thing too I'm concerned about. So Ray, we'll have to entertain bringing, um, you know, we got to bring, we, we're gonna have to get a request for quotes on repainting this tank.
Well, there's two things with that, because I'm, I'm working on one. I'm a commissioner in water for two, and we're doing the same tank, same type of tank, seven hundred fifty thousand gallons. And we just started out, we just finished the inspection and we're gonna, they're writing up some plans. Uh, it's about two million dollars.
Oh, wow.
Inside and out, that tank hasn't been painted in over twenty years. It's, it's in bad, bad shape. I think the last video inside, the tank isn't that bad.
Uh, right.
So I don't know if we look at just clean, cleaning this tank and painting it, uh, outside, because you really can't take this tank down because you'll have no water.
Right.
So we would have to look at either bringing a temporary pneumatic, uh, sure, they have them on trailers and stuff, a pneumatic system, and hook it up and run the system that way, while this is down, because it takes about three to four months of painting if you're gonna do inside and out, to just get the coating down. So it's just a couple ideas that you can throw around. We can look at it.
Yeah, I thought the, I thought the last report we had of the inside tank, it was in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I have to take a look at it. I forgot to take a look at it. You guys should have it, but I'll, I'll take it. If not, I'll forward it back up to you. If not, it's not that bad to get somebody in there with a robot and just, uh, drive around, check it out.
Right. Is it the same company that does the inside and the outside?
Yeah, we, you can get that. Yeah, we have a different company we've been using, and so same one over here, uh, and they're pretty quick on it. They have a mini, mini robot now, a little camera guy driving up and down in the water. Doesn't do a lot of disturbance, so you can keep the tank on.
Good. I'm assuming they've got a sandblast this outside exterior.
There's a couple different ways to do it. Some of them, uh, either sandblast, or you try to water blast, you, you know, none of this is contaminant, uh, doesn't have lead, PCBs and nothing like that. But yeah, you have to encapsulate the whole tank. You can't let go, anything go in the air. So we've cleaned them before with chemicals and also just rolled them after to paint them. So there's, there's different options. You know, if we had a tank in Grotten that we were looking to put up, uh, it would, we could take this one offline and this would cover, you know, run at each one, but that tank hasn't gone up yet. And it's a few years out because, uh, it was supposed to go up for the Mystic Oral School, uh, and help aquarium out, but that didn't happen yet.
What is that, uh, is that an air intake?
Yeah, I think that's a, uh, I, I was looking at that, and that's just, uh, somebody, they had a hole there for some reason, put a boot over it.
Oh, so it's.
It's not an air intake. It has its own vent system on it, so usually the vents are much bigger than that to keep the egg going back and forth. It's usually a twelve-inch pipe or twenty-four. So yeah, I, I, I saw it after. I was gonna have him go back up, but I said, eh, don't worry about it right now.
Yeah, it looks like it's maybe used for recycling or recirculating. Hmm. Anyway, um, okay, so this is something that we're probably gonna be looking at, you know, next year, because we're not, the weather's, you know.
At least the spring.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, we, we've got time where we can put together a bid package and, you know, plans and specs and go out to bid on it over the winter.
Yeah, I'm wondering, um, how we're gonna pay for it. You know, that's, that's my, that, that, that's my next concern. Um, you know, even if it's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. It would take everything.
I thought the chairman paid for it. Isn't that your job?
Yeah. I'm afraid not. Um, anyway, that, I don't know if that qualifies for the opera funds or infrastructure funds. We'll have to see. I know that, uh, Marshall wanted to write up a, um, some kind of bonding for getting rid of the rest of the, demoing the rest of the site, so that's.
This might be a better thing to put in the bonding package than.
I think so. Yes. Yeah, so we're, I have no, I agree, and I, I think that's what we're gonna have to look at. I have no status on yet on, on item number three in the old business, which has to do with some additional quotes we need to, to finish up some of the, some of that business.
A quick question on, just to finish up on the tank. If we just do the outside, rough idea of the cost, just the outside?
I would think it would be at least a minimum of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, could be more. Um, it depends, you know, I, you know, Ray, I wish they could, uh, use an epoxy coating. They make it last forever.
They do now. That's one of the, uh, the, the things is for epoxy, but it's still, they only guarantee it for twenty years because it's outside, outside taken. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, they have a whole bunch of different types of paints now that, uh, you can look at.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we're gonna move on to the wa, the waste treatment facility feed pump status. I'm gonna share, let me share something here, and this is gonna be a discussion. Let me see, where is it? You go. Hold on a second. Oh, here we go. You guys see that? No, you didn't, because I didn't share it. Okay, here we go. All right. So you see this Smith and Lovelace Series three thousand, Craig Smart Control and Tipper Putt. Now, let me give you some background here. What we're trying to do is remove, we, we're, we're having some trouble with a pump down that's, that's, you know, about fifteen feet down in the underground. And, uh, some valves, they failed. So the whole idea is to put the feed pump station, this is what feeds the, um, SBRs above ground. Actually, where we'd like to do is put it right on top of the, the, the well, the, um, the tank, the feed tank. Now, th, th, this is, this is interesting. If you, if we were to have an engineering study done on this, you're looking at a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars just for an engineering study. It hasn't done anything yet. So Steve and I put our heads together and said, wait a minute, we can save the town and everybody else a heck of a lot of money. If we go with a company that, that builds skid-mounted or modular, um, units, it's all self-contained. You can see in the picture here that there's a hood that opens up. All the controls are in there, all the valves are in there, all the pumps are in there. Everything's done. All the engineering's done. And then if we employ a, a contractor that puts these things in, we're gonna save about a hundred thousand dollars minimum in engineering cost. So what we're proposing, but the only way this is gonna work, and that's why we're having this discussion, is that we single-source this project. This company, Smith and Lovelace, this is, they're the number one in the country that, that puts these together. As a matter of fact, I believe they're the only ones who make them, um, the skid-mounted, this whole self-contained design. What we're looking at is a three thousand series. It's, um, because it's PLC controlled, uh, it will probably put in ten horsepower motors. Uh, all the controls are in place, and all, all the engineering is done. So it's actually the manufacturer that's guaranteeing this thing. And all I'm gonna do is core, uh, cut some holes in the concrete, um, tank up on top and insert this with a, you take a crane and you insert it in there, and then you have to do some downstream piping. and insert this with a, you take a crane and you insert it in there and then you have to do some downstream piping. And that's it. Um, but again, the only way this is gonna work is we need a single source. This this unit costs seventy, about seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't have the formal quote yet. He was supposed to send it to me. I haven't gotten it, but he gave me that estimate. I'm I'm assuming it's gonna be that plus or minus. Yes.
Can we also avoid some some rip out, uh, just leave the old stuff in the ground?
Correct. We would not do anything with that. We would now, somebody said.
Got a tie in the pipe somewhere.
Well, well, they, they, well, we're gonna be bypassing, but so somebody said that other people in this state and in Massachusetts who use these units, by the way, we've got, we've got some good, um, feedback from them. They pour concrete down the hole. Now, I I'm not suggesting we do that. I don't want to do that. I don't want a big concrete bubble down below with old equipment. But yes, Terry, we would not demo this. We would maybe pull out some stuff that, you know, maybe the pumps, the two pumps that are still working, one is not working and sell them because we we wouldn't, there's no use for it. Those pumps are flooded pumps. The pumps we see here actually have vacuum pumps on them to to cause the vacuum so that you get the inflow into the pump. Right? It's all automated. You don't have to do anything manually, uh, because you've got to raise that head up. Um, what's really neat about these pumps is they're designed to literally bypass big stuff. So it doesn't plug. It it'll buy, it'll actually pump rags and anything else. We don't have to chew up. Uh, we don't have to chew up the material. As a matter of fact, they have evidence to show that when you do chew up the material, what it what it does is ends up downstream and plugs your pipe. So it's no benefit to do that. It's it's better just pass it right through. But the only way it's gonna work, guys, is we have, I I, you know, I have to go to the town council and present this. I I mean, I have a list of reasons why we need, we can, we need to single source this. I mean, obviously, one is we avoid the engineering cost. Number two, it, you put some holes in the concrete and and then you you do some prep work, it avoids shutting down. We, they they can get this all up and up and running within a couple hours. Um, even less than that. So if we do some upfront work before these arrive, uh, and they're gonna be about a twelve week delivery time, so it's gonna be in the spring before we can do this. Um, that we would avoid having to do, but we could do some temporary bypass if we, if something were to go wrong, but but it also avoids downtime. And besides, you know, again, we avoid the engineering cost. Uh, but then we're also dealing with somebody, uh, who's very smartly engineered this and, uh, has great reviews on on the way it's used. But we would have to single source the the manufacturer and the contract. I don't want to go with a contractor that has not installed these things.
Are there other vendors for the similar product?
Not that I'm aware of, Stan. I mean, it might be, but I haven't found any. I mean, the these guys, they're they're, uh, they have, uh, but somebody was telling me about seventy-five, eighty percent of the market. What's that?
Rumpus Pumps. Did you check them?
Uh, no, I haven't checked. I've heard of them. I have not checked. I I did. We can go look. Uh, I just like the idea of, uh, it's it's an outdoor thing. They actually have heaters in there. Okay, that's part of the deal. Keeps it keeps it warm and keeps it from freezing. Uh, but look at the access. You open up the hood and, you know, you have easy access. You don't have to go down a hole. Um, but Ray, we could, we could check. We we could check with them and see what they've got.
What if it uses a ton of those?
Are there any drawbacks to having it above ground like that? Or is it, because it sounds pretty good, but is is there like a catch? Is there anything?
No, I mean, it's actually, this is one of the most popular things being done today. Uh, they mentioned, um, Putnam. They mentioned about three or four different sites right now in Connecticut that are pulling the units from below ground. You could say engineering wise, you don't have to pull a vacuum. Um, you know, these pumps are flooded, so they just take off, uh, when you want to start them. But, uh, you know, in today's technology, that's really not an advantage. The biggest advantage is being able to get at these things at will. Right now, we have what's called a confined entry. We need two people to get down in there. One person to be standing, uh, uh, on the ground above and watching the other guy come down. The other problem is you gotta see a thin, a small hole to get all this equipment. And there's very little room down there to do, even muscle a wrench. Um, so it, I I'd be honest with you. I don't know why they put these things underground. I have no clue why this was a popular thing sixty or seventy years ago.
It's having got the suction head right.
I guess. Yeah. Well, no, the free, yeah, there's a, there's a freezing component. But again, um, you know, heck, our screening plant didn't have a cover on it for years and it froze. We had to build a building for that. So, you know, so that's that's what's coming down the stream. Soon as we gets the the thing, I'm gonna be asking us to discuss. I mean, Ray, we'll take a look at them, um, and see what what they what they have. But I'm gonna be tending toward this skid mounted, pre-engineered, don't need to do anything but drop it in and start it.
It'd be easier to request a bid waiver if they were the only manufacturer of this particular thing.
Yes.
And it uniquely solved the problem.
We could, I think we could do that, but we have to verify that. Yeah, this is, this is what I think it will solve our problem. Um, the mayor already knows, I I mean, he I think Bill and the mayor, they were thinking we were gonna be spending over three hundred thousand. So the other part of this is we're gonna be saving money. Um, now to come up to the town council, say, well, you could go the bidway process way, but please be known that it could be three hundred thousand dollars versus, you know, no bid, which which we're gonna not, you know, involve engineers.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute. Uh, I think, I think you've just mixed two things. I think even if there's another company like Rumpus Pumps or whoever the other one it was that Ray mentioned, even if we had to go competitive with this above ground solution, it's still the right solution.
No, it's the right solution, Terry. What I'm implying is that the other, if it's, if they don't have a skid mounted design, we may have to go with engineering.
Well, that, that's what we need to find out. I mean, if if there is nobody who does the same service as Smith and Loveless, then then I think we can justify the choice.
Okay. Yeah, that's my thinking. Now, we 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 we're, we're going with with, uh, all the smart technology they've got with this. Okay. Let's go back to.
Real quick, did you say that the company services the the unit if anything?
Yes, they do.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, they 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 they, we have a local distributor here. Um, that we would contact for 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 service. Um, whoops, let me go back to this. All right. So, um, hopefully by next time we'll we'll have, um, Jerry, we'll we'll have some more information so we can proceed with the project. I'd like to, because it's a twelve to sixteen week delivery time, I would like to do this. Hopefully next year in the spring. Okay. Now let's talk about, uh, one fifty and one seven. So the owner uh, had contacted me and and he, I mean, to me, he's actually, uh, built his house. Um, I didn't know that he was that far along. Ray and I went out there, um, and we took a look and and the, I mean, the, um, the boundary, the property lines are obviously way within two hundred feet. Matter of fact, there's a twelve inch main on the other side of the road and we've had this discussion last meeting about the meter pit. Um, I had to do some research. I had to understand what is going on. There was a lot of miss uh, understanding, the communication, ledge, he had a letter from Ledge Light in two thousand six. Uh, that approval for a well, and then I got another communication ledge light that said, no, that the only people who can do well exceptions is the Department of Health. Um, so I said to Ray, well, we're gonna have to, this, there's no, excuse me, he's gonna have to tie in. However, I I actually was able to, I I got ahold of Eric McPhee from the Department of Health. Uh, we had a good talk. I sent him all the information. And it's the proverbial, I dropped the dead chicken on his desk. It's his decision between him and the and the property owner. I left the, I I mean, I I sent the application into, um, Department of Health, uh, rejecting the application. Uh, however, I I did indicate to him that this is a, you know, this is a decision that the Department of Health makes, not us. And he's, he agreed. He said, yes. So it's no, it's it's out of our hands.
Good punt.
What's that?
Good punt.
Can do the same thing with one fifty. I'm 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 gonna give information to Eric uh, and say, look, this is your decision. I I did say that we are willing to put a meter pit there. He wanted to know that. Said, you are? Yes. Uh, but but Bill's not here and I know you're here, Sharon. One of the things that's making it expensive is when they, so so here was happening. They got approval for a well in two thousand six because there was no twelve inch main there. So since that time, there's is a twelve inch main. We put it up to the, um, senior, the the senior, um, center. But they didn't, the contractor did not put any laterals, not one. I mean, you're supposed to do that. You're supposed to put, you know, the possibility, and actually, you you really should dig up the road and put a, uh, the the, you know, the the possibility of a meter pit on each of these property lines. And that was not done. So that's expensive for us when we have to put the meter pit in, we have to put the lateral in too. Um, and this is a lessons learned. When we put, when we do a a water extension, we really need to look at the property that it's going by and make sure that we have the ability to tie into that, if that property is gonna be developed. Um, but I can see the confusion. I can see where, you know, this was, this Cooper subdivision was done prior to two thousand six and there was no water there. Uh, it was about nine hundred feet away. Um, but you're right, Sharon. We did the punt. We said, you know what, we're willing. Depending on the DPH's decision, we will give them water. Or if they so desire, they can give a well exemption, but we're out of it. So. Uh, so if there are any other questions, let me know, but we're gonna move on.
You're discussing one seventy right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. One fifty is is not, one one seventy, to be, okay, I I'll give you some some observations that, um, Ray and I saw. One seventy could have gotten an easement and cut his the water line length by a third, I mean, almost down to a third of what he would have to, if he follows the driveway. His driveway goes kind of like northeast and then goes southwest. It's kind of like a L shape to to get to his house. It's a flag lot. But as you know, the shorter, the shorter distance between two points would be a straight line from his property line on Gallup Hill right to his house, but he would have to get an easement. So I was a little bit baffled why planning and zoning didn't discuss that with him. You know, that's not our thing. That's planning and zoning, saying you got a tiny award, and by the way, you you need to get an easement to to make it easier. One fifty is, um, a little different. He's actually a lot closer. Um, his driveway, and now he hasn't put a house in yet. But his, but his driveway is a little bit, is a little bit simplified and and he could put the water line there. So anyway, I don't want to belabor this too much, but that's, that's where we stand. Now I need to share um, the next item. Is is there any other questions? Anybody have any other questions on one fifty, one seventy? So Ray, I guess the point is we shouldn't hold off until TPH makes a decision on those lots.
Yeah, because we talked to the gentleman from one fifty. He called, uh, Doug up, but he said, we told him we were gonna put the service to his property line and he's, he was fine with it. He just said he had to go back to, uh, Butlins to talk to them. But if we're, if we're gonna do both, you know, if Eric's gonna make a decision on both, we'll just wait till somebody says yes and no.
Right. I don't know if Eric's aware of one fifty. I did give him a hint that there was another one. But but he, but he is working on one seventy. Matter of fact, he asked me in a follow-up question about what he, is he expecting correspondence from Ledge Light? And I said, I don't think so. I gave him all the information that I got from Ledge Light. Um, so he has it. Okay, now the status of the sewer line, let me let me bring up, um, the communication with Jeremy. And let me see, I gotta share it. Hold on a second. I gotta stop the share here. Already did. Let me see if I can get up. Okay, we go. So here's the status. Uh, actually, I need to go down here because he, he had a couple of questions. Let me bring this up. So he says he's currently working to incorporate the sewer extension and they'll be done. He's talking about, this was incorrect. He was talking about some non-eligible low CIP funding item that um, anyway, especially if you follow the Connecticut DOT standard format. Now, here here's, uh, so he's got a so that they should, they should be done by November. But they're recommending we do borings and probes along the proposed sewer route to a depth of ten feet to quantify the anticipated rock quantities for the prospective bidders before the project is out to bid. So I agree, we need to do this. He calls us a task amendment. So the multi-use fat would buy, they'll be done by mid, mid-November. Now, the funding at the the challenge grant, the Connecticut Community Challenge Grant, the application is now available. Uh, I will alert Juliet that that, uh, is writing the grant that she can get the application. The intent to apply form is due December third. Then the application deadline is January fourteenth, and then the announcement is done in March and April tentative. Now, he shared with me why we need to do this boring. Now, Ray, I thought you, when you put a the water line up Colonel Edge Highway, I know you hit some pretty big rocks. Um, you, were you involved in that?
No, that was a Rich Johnson, uh, deal, but, uh, we can look at, I don't know if they put any profiles down for a rock. But usually we we measure it and label and station it. So I can check the plans to see if there's anything floating through there.
That might help.
And I think we, I sent the plans down to Steve to, uh, Maslin at one time for the locations, but yeah, we can take a peek because I don't know what you paid for rock if there was any in that area. But we look at it, I can let you know.
He he's just showing pictures here of where the trail is gonna be near and he he's highlighting rock outcrops. And this is along Colonel Edge at Highway. And he circle, you know, he's just circling. And this last picture, it's not, they're not building it on there, but he just wants to show that there are more ledge outcrops along the way. So that would be helpful, Ray, because I think, you know, it it certainly makes sense that if we're gonna bid, if they're gonna bid this thing, we, I don't know why they gotta go down ten feet, but, um, we we probably.
It's kind of deep.
Yeah, I I I don't know why the ten feet. But I think, guys, we're gonna have to anticipate a separate little to to do boring along the way. All right. Any other questions on that or? Okay, let's go back. Any other old business? Think of anything before I go to new business. Uh, let me share this again. My share. Okay, hold on. Resume share. Oops. You guys actually seeing? You're not seeing the minutes, are you?
Not anymore. We see your mailbox now.
I don't want to show that. All right, here we go. Let's try back to the minutes. Okay. Now, there you go. All right, so we're going to new business. Okay, uh, we need the approval of the Water Pollution Control Authority calendar. I did not see any major conflicts.
I saw one, Ed, the, uh, December twenty seventh is the Tuesday between Christmas and New Year's. Why don't we, uh, meet a week earlier that month?
All right.
I saw the same thing.
So that would be December twentieth?
Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the meeting calendar for two thousand twenty-two. The WBCA, uh, with the modification that we meet on December twentieth. Now, isn't that interesting? Because I'm looking at the Agriculture Commission and the Retirement Board, and they're doing December twentieth. Or December nineteenth. I don't know why we're doing the twenty-seventh, okay? Are there any other modifications? Again, okay. All right, so, uh, if there's no discussion, I want to take a vote, all those.
I'd like to point out that we're only good if we're still meeting by Zoom. Right. If we're meeting in person, we, we just put ourselves in conflict with the Agricultural Commission.
Well, either that or we'll meet in a different place. Is that possible?
Well, yeah, but we'd have to work that out because they're the thirty-two. Of course, they're at six and we're at seven, but.
Yeah, uh, well, we could make it a different date before we do the, do the vote here. Um, I can modify the, the, the motion. But I also.
Going to be in person? Or?
I'm thinking it's going to be in person. Maybe we should do, if it is a conflict, maybe we should do it in Zoom, even if we were maybe hybrid or in person.
That may be a good plan.
Yeah, we leave it on, we leave it on the twentieth and go, okay, we don't have a meeting. I, I think we could do that. Yeah. Okay, so we'll, uh, all right, we'll entertain the vote. All those in favor of approving, uh, the schedule signified by saying aye. Uh, those opposed or uh, state, hearing none is, it passes. Okay, the last order of business, and I don't think there's going to be any money left, Bill, but okay. Um, they're thinking of using Opera Funding for repairing some of the Highland drink, uh, water distribution system. And Ray, you're the only one that can tell us where that money could be spent.
You want the list now?
Well, I, I, you know, all seriousness, we're not going to need a list, right? Uh, with a priority up, you know, with the list, the top priority on top, we're going all the way down. I know that you've had, having trouble with high pressure on the bottom part of this distribution system, correct?
Yeah, you have a lot of, uh, the side streets are all like two inch, uh, cast iron with holes in it that we keep repairing and stuff, so. We can, uh, we, we have a whole map of every, since we've taken over, uh, uh, running it, uh, of what we've had breaks in, so we'll get a map and I'll take a look at it and go on priorities for you.
Okay, what's the standard today? What, what would be the standard today? What would you put in? I, I don't mean just the ID sites, but I'm talking about material of construction.
Uh, ductile.
A ductile? Okay.
Yeah, because like a meeting house, you have one main that we had that break in that's, uh, seven feet down.
Right.
Uh, and then you have all the side streets are two inch, inch and a half. And that's not even, you can't, you can't put a hydrant up. The minimum main for a hydrant is eight. Uh, we just have to look at how many people, uh, on these mains for water quality. So some of them, what we do is put fours and put a blow off in the hydrants at the beginning of the road. So, you know, for fire, you got to change everything. You do now, it's within five hundred feet of each other in a, in a district, in a district that, you have to look at the houses and stuff, so.
Has the council approved any of this money for anything?
What was the question, Sharon?
Has the council approved the expenditure of any of this money? It's four million dollars, right?
No, they haven't. The mayor has voiced his support behind the Legerd Center Sewer Line.
Right.
And, and the feed pump, uh, system for the, so we can handle the higher flows. But I have not heard any other, you know, I, I did hear, well, if you go down Sandy Hollow Road, you know, I did hear something about, uh, the guardrails or the lack of contrast.
No, I, I, this, this is just, I was a little surprised that this just sounds like a repair, and I thought you had to spend this on new new things.
You know, um,
I thought the whole idea was to put in new pipe, put in new sewers, put in new stuff. I didn't think you could use it for repairs.
Yeah, I think there was, I, I, I did reme, I, I'll, I'll share with you with the whole commission is I believe I have, uh, somebody sent me the criteria, the state cri, the state criteria for spending this. And I thought there were, um, upgrades. You could do upgrades. So this would be considered an upgrade because you're, you're changing a, you know, one and a half inch line to an eight inch line with, with a fire hydrant, I guess. I don't know. Um, but let me, let me go back. I have that document. You could, you could, you guys can take a look at it. Um, but this is Bill. I mean, he's putting up a request. Um, and I think, and, and yeah, we should pursue it. And, and one of those things, Sharon, is going to be, does it really qualify? Yeah, for the funding.
Yeah, I mean, there's only so much money and we know the sewer line is going to cost a lot, and you're looking at the other thing that was going to be a hundred grand, so it goes pretty fast, scarily.
No, it does. And the other thing to consider is if we get that community grant, it will cut the sewer line cost in half. So instead of spending two point one million, we'll be spending, you know, a million. So there'd be a million given back to the town and to spend in Opera Fund. So that, and, you know, I'm looking at the criteria. If this doesn't qualify for this community grant, I don't know what would. I mean, we, that we'd check off all the boxes. You know, so, and I know you can't put any political pressure on this group. I, I don't know if, you know, we talked to Kathy Austin or Chris Conley, whether that would help, but, um, I, I don't want to be overconfident, but boy, we sure, it sure looks good for us to get that. So we would get that money back, but you're right. If we don't, you know, we've already spent two million dollars of the four.
And I'm sure there's a lot of other people that want some of this money.
Um, I won't tell you who said this. Uh, the answer to that is correct, but they're all pipe dreams in, in, in the opinion of this person, because they wouldn't qualify for this. You know, it's pretty well ag- agreed that this sewer line thing for the, for the community center is, you know, it's a given. You know, nobody's gonna, nobody's even going to buy it an eyelash that we spent the money on that, so. Okay, uh,
I have a question for Ray.
What's that?
I have a question for Ray. Can I ask him?
Yeah, of course.
Ray, if, if you were going to replace a distribution system like the Highlands and you knew that you were going to do it in sections, would you start with the trunk or the branches?
I, I would start with the trunk. Matter of fact, I'm doing, I just did a, finished up a nine million dollar design for Granton, uh, in, uh, Aquanic Bridge area. We've been working on it for three years. Uh, crews are doing it with replacing, uh, the main line and going down the side streets as we go. We divided the whole place up. So it's, it's the same as what you need up here. But you have ten inch, uh, you have different sized pipe that I don't know why anybody even thought about using them. So some spots, the mains too big for where, what it should be, and other spots, it's too small. So that's part of your hydraulics that you have an issue with.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't, Terry, I don't expect that they're going to be doing any development or bigger houses in Highlands, so I don't. I think, I think the water load, the pressure is going to be the same.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. It's just, it's just a matter of, you know, where, where do you dig first? You know, what's, what's the logical approach to the thing? And, and probably, uh, since you, you've got a bunch of different, uh, pipe sizes in the branches now, you might as well put in the trunk so that it, all the taps off the, the trunk are going to be the right size for the, the eventual branches.
Yeah, I, I would think, what am I concerned to be, Ray, is that if, if, let's say there are some fire hydrants that once, you know, God forbid, there's a fire, that they use the fire hydrant and then all, all the rest of the downstream homes are, they're, they have vacuum, they open up their water and they get a vacuum.
Yeah, well, we noticed that during hydrant flushing, uh, we can flush different areas, uh, open up two hydrants because it doesn't, doesn't work out, so. Yeah, I'll get the map for the next meeting. I'll get the breaks that we've had and some ideas, so you can at least just take a peek and uh, see what you want to.
Thank you, Ray. Yeah, that, that's good. That'll, I'm sure that'll satisfy what Bill's looking at. We can, you know, present it that way. All right, guys, uh, are there any other questions before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn, so move. Have a good night, guys, and stay.
Hi, everybody. Good night. Happy Halloween.
Halloween, that's right.